City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Revelle.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Miller.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Nine to zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, March 21st, 2016, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First item is the Mayor's public announcements. I didn't bring the letter with me, but I got a letter from CMAP saying that our dues are going too close to double, which still is only a couple thousand, and we're sort of stuck because the state is not supporting CMAP, and we need CMAP in order to get federal flow-through money. So, I'm only bringing you bad news and no solution. City Manager, do you have any more cheerful public announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do. I'm bringing you a solution. As you all know, we are embarking upon a revised street cleaning program, and this evening we have with us Paul DiAgostino, the Bureau Manager for, how was I getting this wrong? Is it Natural Resources? No. Environmental Services.
Environmental Services.
Environmental Services. So, you've all known that Paul has been responsible for trees, and he remains responsible for trees. Anything, basically, that grows that we own, Paul's responsible.
Yes.
He is also responsible for waste and recycling, and he's responsible for street sweeping.
Yes.
Mr. Mayorm is responsible for signs, but Mr. DiAgostino is responsible for street sweeping. So, he is here. We have at the dais the newsletter that is at the post office, and will be arriving in Evanston residents' mailboxes over the next couple of days. And so, Mr. DiAgostino is here to talk about our implementation of the new schedule and answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm just going to highlight some of the things with this new changes to our street cleaning operations for 2016. The signs are all going to be new. They're going to start to be installed later this week by an outside vendor, and he should finish installing those signs probably by the middle of April. And these new signs will list the specific days and times parking will be restricted on each street, such as the first Thursday of the month from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. There are going to be shorter parking restrictions this year. Residential streets will now be cleaned from either 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. or from noon until 4:00 p.m. So, you'll only have to move your car for half the day rather than the whole day. Residential schedule, most residential streets will now be cleaned once per month, and signs will be posted at the beginning and the end of each block and provide the specific day and timeframe for the street cleaning. The primary route schedules, they will be cleaned twice per month rather than every two weeks, and this minor adjustment allows the signs to communicate specific cleaning days, just like the residential streets. We're also extending the season for street cleaning, beginning this year. We actually started on March 1st this year. We'll be going until December 15th, weather permitting, obviously. Since the street sweepers carry loads of water with them, we can't go out when it's too cold. So, let's see, the season's now, yeah, March 1st through December 15th. Important to note, though, that parking enforcement will not begin until May 2nd. We're going to give all the residents time to adjust and get ready and get used to the new schedule. So, there will be no parking restrictions, well, no parking enforcement until May 2nd, which is a Monday. Some things that are still the same from previous years, the schedule for the downtown and streets with parking only on one side will still be like they were last year, but they will also get new signs in those areas as well. And just like last year, you can always get text or email alerts to remind yourself when your streets are going to be cleaned if you sign up online at cityofevanston.org/parking/streetcleaning. Actually, that's about it. I can take questions if you've got any.
Mr. DiAgostino, how many signs are we replacing, approximately?
I'd have to check with Mr. Mayorm on that. I don't know how many.
I think it's about 6,000.
Total, 6,000, 3,000 on this first round.
All right. So, a lot of signs to be replaced.
Yes.
And no more mid-block signs?
No more mid-block signs. Those are actually getting removed as we speak.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Just want to make sure that if anything goes wrong with installing the signage, there will still be no enforcement until after those signs are up, right?
That's correct, yes.
But there will be street cleaning before there is enforcement.
Yes.
For sure.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
City Clerk, do you have communications? And could someone bring me the public comment sign-in sheet? Thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have one thing.
It's not there?
Attention. On your desk, I mean, on your lives, each one, you should have had a letter from Self and Bonnie Wilson. We've come up with an idea of making a welcome package for all new people bringing, buying their real estate transfer tax stamps here to give them an idea of what's going on, what they need to do, look at in the city. We haven't got the packet together yet, but we just want to give you an idea of what we're thinking about doing and to get your support of it. I think it'd be a great idea to go forward. We also have the Commerce Department working with, Chamber of Commerce working with us. We've got quite a few, we've got the superintendents of both 65 and 202 interested in doing this as well, and some of the businesses are looking at putting things in the package as well to show the newcomers what they can expect. I've got two of the persons here that may want to add to what I'm saying. Bonnie Oylane.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mayor and Alderman. Bonnie Wilson from 530 Hindman. I just wanted to say that a year ago in a chamber meeting, I met with, I was sitting with Paul Gorin, the Superintendent of 65, and he was telling me about the overcrowding of Lincoln School where my granddaughter goes to school. And he said, and I was thinking about what we can do to make that not happen all the time. So, my thought was that why don't we have a welcome packet for every new buyer that comes in and gives it, and gives, and give them that welcome packet with information on the schools so they can call the schools immediately and tell them what school they would, their children are going into, or future children are going, what schools they're going into. And I talked to both superintendents, are very excited about this program, about this welcome packet, so they will have a better idea of children that will be coming into Evanston. And also, the chamber is very excited about having their community guide in the packet, and the downtown Evanston will have their map in the packet. Plus, I would, it would be nice to have a letter from the mayor and the aldermen of that ward that the buyers are moving into to welcome them to Evanston, plus all the other information that everybody needs when they come to the city. As a real estate agent in Evanston, as a township possessor, I feel this is so important and be very helpful to welcoming new buyers and new residents in this city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's all I have for this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I am told no one signed up for citizen comment. Is that correct, Madeline? I'm looking at you back there. Everyone's, all right. Okay. What?
I don't know. I don't know. You guys speak on the Emerson Street. I just feel like if people would follow the, we need to change it. So, I don't know how many people feel that way, but I'll listen.
All right. First on the agenda is special orders of business. City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We're here tonight to give you an update on the Emerson Street, Ridge Avenue, and Green Bay Road corridor project. We have received bids on the project which exceed our budgeted funds, and we would like to share with you details, some options, and talk about what appropriate next steps would be to making a determination how we should proceed. Mr. Stonebeck, the Director of the Public Works Agency is here, and we will pull up the PowerPoint presentation Mr. Mario is, I'm sorry, grabbing documents, and we will do that, but I'm sure Mr. Stonebeck, a seasoned professional, will be able to start without his PowerPoint. So, Mr. Stonebeck, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Alderman, Kirk, and City Manager Bobkowitz. Tonight, I am going to talk about the Green Bay, or actually, it's called Emerson Ridge Green Bay Corridor Project. This project has been around since 2013, when we first hired a consulting engineering firm, ESI, to begin the design on that. We were successful in getting grants from both the Service Transportation Program and 1.9 million, which helps fund the street pavement, sewer work, and traffic signals at the Emerson Ridge Green Bay intersection. That is a matching grant, so they're paying 70% of the eligible cost, and then the city has to pay 30% of it. And we also got a CMAC grant, 1.92 million dollars, and that helps fund the pavement, the street scape, traffic signals, signal coordination, streetlights, bridge work, and sewer work on Green Bay Road north of the intersection. That, too, is a matching type of grant where they're funding 80% of the eligible cost, and the other 20% has to come from the City of Evanston. But they also establish the limit of the project to how much they would actually fund, and so, that's where our challenge is, is that we have more, the low bid came in higher than what was anticipated, and therefore, the gap between the eligible and the ineligible cost is much higher. And we're going to start the slideshow. Thank you, Oscar. I'm sorry for not setting that up with you. This slide shows you the limits of the construction, and we just lost it somehow. The project starts on the right-hand side, if you will, on Green Bay Road, north of McCormick. The project comes all the way down Green Bay Road to where Green Bay Road intersects Ridge. Ridge Avenue, starting just at Garrett Place and going south, past Clark Street to where the street, to where Ridge Avenue had previously been resurfaced. We're also proposing to do Asbury between Green Bay Road and Emerson, and then Emerson from Asbury over to Oak. So, that's the limit of our construction. Part of the work is to eliminate the difference in grade between Ridge and Green Bay Road in this area right here, and that is to allow for a better line of sight, which then would allow traffic to be able to turn left onto Emerson's, southbound Green Bay Road traffic to turn east onto Emerson Street, which is something that they currently cannot do. Green Bay Road, north of the intersection, would be transformed into being three lanes with turn lanes for the side streets to go on. And then, one of the other reasons that we're starting north of the bridge here, we're starting up here, we want to try to get the majority of the traffic that, the through traffic to go on McCormick Boulevard, and we're going to narrow how many lanes there are over the bridge, which would allow us to widen the sidewalk on the bridge, which currently is a very narrow sidewalk. If you're riding a bike and there's a pedestrian, you pretty much have to get off your bike and walk the bike so that you don't run into the pedestrian. This slide shows the intersections where we're going to replace the traffic signals. So, we're replacing the traffic signals at six current locations, and then we're adding a traffic signal, a new traffic signal that currently does not exist on Green Bay Road at Asbury as well. And then, there's also timing and coordination of all the traffic signals. So, the existing signals that are out there are approximately 30 years old, and there is no coordination between the signals at this point in time. This project, this slide shows the street scape and the landscape. It's very difficult to see, but there is some red lines that are along this edge and continuing up here, where we're going to put in wider sidewalks, new trees, and brick border on the sidewalk to help increase the economic development of this corridor. And we'll also have a lot of lawn restoration, but more specifically, along the east side of Green Bay Road, we'll put in some bio swells to be able to handle some of the stormwater that comes onto the street as well. This slide shows the water mains. Water mains are proposed on Green Bay Road from Noys all the way south to Asbury, and then south on Asbury, and new water main on Ridge Avenue and underneath the viaduct on Emerson Street. There's over 1.2 miles of water main, and they're all over 100 years of age at this point in time. There is a maintenance problem with the water mains on, I'm sorry, on Green Bay Road. We've had several water main breaks out in that area, not so much on the other areas, though. This slide indicates the area of new traffic signals, I'm sorry, of new drainage structures. We're going to work, because of reconfiguration, there'll be 85 new drainage structures, and then there's 61 drainage structures that we will be rehabilitated using the CIPP lining And then, these dots represent the 55 new streetlights that are proposed for this project, and there will be significant increased lighting underneath the viaduct there to light that area up as well. So, this is getting into, the bad part here is that the engineer's estimate was at 8.6 million dollars, but the low bid, as you can see here, was 11.2 million dollars. And the other bids are all higher than that, not too far apart, but obviously, the work that's being done and planned for this project, it came in higher than the engineer's estimate, and unfortunately, also higher than the city's funding allocation at this time. This slide indicates the major areas where the bid prices came in higher than the engineer's estimate. The roadway work, we thought would be under 3 million dollars, came in at 3.7. Traffic signals, we thought would be at 1.4, are coming in at 2.1. The sewer work went from 800,000 to over a million dollars. Street lighting went from 800,000 to 1.1. Streetscape almost doubled from 210 to 400,000. The bridge modifications did double, we thought would be 120,000, went to 273. Traffic control and mobilization are pay items that are in the bid that the, that cannot be eliminated, and so, it is our opinion that the contractor probably put all of his overhead and profit into those pay items, because you might be able to eliminate the bridge modification work, but you can't eliminate traffic control or mobilization. So, the contractor...
Alderman Braithwaite has a question.
Thank you, Madam. Dave, can you just outline what mobilization is, and maybe guess to why that cost is so, was so, I guess, underestimated?
So, the mobilization is the cost that the contractor puts into a bid to mobilize his equipment into the area, demobilize it after the end of the project, but because of the many different types of trades that are involved with this project, with the traffic signals, the sewers, the water main, you have lots of different construction techniques coming in and coming out, and that's why we believe mobilization is higher than what we anticipated. But again, it's also, I guess my opinion at least, that mobilization is a bid item that you can't reduce the quantity of, and therefore, the contractor makes sure that he has his overhead and profit into those items that can't be eliminated or reduced. So, he's making sure that he gets his full profit that he anticipated on this project. And that's similar with the traffic control. You can't eliminate those two pay items, adjust the quantities. So, he's, the contractor, there's a regulation by IDOT to how much you're allowed to put into these types of pay items. It can't be more than 6%, and I think if we total them all up, it probably came right up to 5.99%. So, the contractor was playing the game as best as he could. This project is very complex because of, as I indicate, all the different types of trades that were involved. We were hoping to complete this project in one construction season, which then meant that there had to be a lot of coordination between all the different trades that came in and make sure that they had access to the areas that they needed to work on. Traffic maintenance during this project will also be very challenging to keep the traffic flowing while all this work is taking place. It is the triangular area itself where we're adjusting the grade on Green Bay and Ridge, south of Emerson, is a fairly congested area, as well as the traffic on Emerson there. And so, all those things add up to the complexity of the project that we believe resulted in the bid prices coming in higher than what we anticipated. It could be anticipated that this project would have those type of effects, but the, because you're running through IDOT, you have to kind of put your bid prices in based on IDOT's past history. So, the engineer, when he creates his engineer's estimate, goes back and look at the similar construction projects completed for IDOT within the last three years, and then they average that cost out. This is kind of set up by IDOT and how you have to do it. Some of the work may not have been completed in the last three years, and there weren't many similar projects, so they go back a little bit further until they get projects and they average it all together. But there's 267 different pay items on this project, again, representing how complex the project is, and then, you're more or less forced to use the IDOT average bid prices over the past several years, and this came in. IDOT has already reviewed the contract, the low bidder's contractor's bid price, and has found them to be acceptable. So, IDOT doesn't have any issue continuing to award the project. The concern is, is that Evanston may not have the funding it needs to match all the work at this point in time. So, this is a summary of it. So, the city has funding authorized in the current CIP program between the general fund, the water fund, the sewer fund, the parking fund of 8.334, or 8.335 million dollars. And that includes the two grants that we have, and then the local funding. And the low bid came in at 11.1, so we're 2.8 million dollars over what we have funding in the current CIP to accomplish. Staff at this time is still trying to analyze how we can move forward. Obviously, one solution would be to sell additional bonds to fund the difference, so that would mean adding 2.8 million dollars. We are going back to STP and CMAC to ask for additional funding. The STP group is meeting this Wednesday. We don't think that they'll increase their funding at all, but CMAC is having a meeting on April 7th, and we're hopeful, hopeful that they may increase their funding, maybe up to 1.3 million dollars. That would be taking the bid items that they considered to be eligible when they originally figured out the grant amount, and using the contractor's low bid pricing and their 70%, I think it is, it would increase what they might grant us, up to 1.3 million dollars. And we are asking for that money, and we won't know whether or not we have that money until after the meeting on April 7th. I would propose that at the April 11th meeting, staff will be coming back to you with whether or not we got that funding. We would also look at, and we need more time to work this out, some options that we might have to reduce the scope of work on this project if the council's not inclined to sell more bonds. That's the last be decided, but we might be able to maintain some of the current street lighting work, what's existing out there, and eliminate some of that from the project, but we can't be too dark. We might be able to eliminate the work on Asbury Avenue between Green Bay and Emerson. The intersection at Green Bay and Asbury is part of the project. The intersection of Emerson and Asbury is part of the project, so it would be just the block itself between that, where we could eliminate the street pavement, the streetlight work, the drainage structure work, and things like that. We could, similarly, we could do the same on Ridge Avenue between Garnett Place and Emerson. We would do the intersection of Emerson and Ridge, but eliminate the work north of Emerson up to Garnett Place. That would eliminate water main work, eliminate some sewer work, the street pavement and some traffic, or not traffic lights, but streetlights. And then, on Green Bay's road itself, we could potentially eliminate the work north of Noys Street, which means that we don't make the bridge improvements, the sidewalk stays the way that it is, and we don't start the three-lane configuration until south of Noys Street, and then set it up the way that we had. So, those are the different options that we're looking at at this point in time, and also, also the conclusion of my presentation, and I'd be willing to entertain questions that people may have.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn.
Yes, Mr. Stonebeck, would we, can you, would we have to, is it a choice among those, or would we have to combine all of those to close the gap?
It all depends on what the City Council wants to do. If they want to sell some more, some more bonds, maybe not all of it, if we get the extra funding from CMAC. We're going to price all those up to figure out what, what the cost benefit would be, what the cost reduction would be, I should say, it wouldn't be a benefit, it would be a cost reduction, and then see what funding we have, see where the aldermen want to go with potentially funding more of the work, and then give the aldermen realistic prices on what we think we could eliminate.
Okay. That's what I was interested in, is do we, if we, if we got no money from CMAP and we decided not to sell more bonds, then would we have to check every, every one of those off?
Yes, and maybe more.
That gives me an idea. Okay.
And we just haven't had the opportunity to run the numbers yet to figure out what specifically the cost reduction would be by eliminating those.
Right. Well, that's, that's probably about 25% of the project, because it's, we're short about 3 million, and the project is about 12, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Miller.
Answer my question.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Well, first, I would suggest we immediately send our increased dues to CMAC. And one of the things, the problem I always have with these kinds of bids is when one contractor is so much higher, or the bidder is so much lower than the others, but in this case, given the scope of the contract, it seems to me that the bids were pretty tight. I mean, a million here, pretty tight. So, I would definitely like to see the exceptions cost out, the exclusions, or the, your recommended exclusions costed out.
And these are the ones that we could come off the top of our head quickly looking at, and if there's others that present an opportunity as we're doing our more detailed study, they will be presented at the April 11th meeting as well.
All right. The local funds, the four and a half million local funds, are those funds from reserves or are those bonded funds?
I would say that the parking fund is from reserve. The sewer fund would be from reserve. The water fund, I'm not quite certain on, I don't think we're into...
How much of the 4.5 million is bonds?
And I'm sorry, I have to pull up my memo, get that out. 1.5 million for sure, that's proposed for the, from the CIP for construction.
Those would be the property that supported bonds would be the 1.5 million.
And then, the parking fund, I think, has the sufficient funding. The sewer fund, we're not selling bonds for that. The water fund, I can't really, I don't believe we're selling bond issue in the water fund.
Would you ever buy the sewer water fund?
But it's not for this, is it?
Marty. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Marty Lyons, CFO. The debt for the water fund or any of the enterprise funds would be paid by those fees, so the water fund would be taken care of by water rates and not be a general obligation. It might be a general obligation bond, but we would abate, so that wouldn't raise our debt limit, if you will, for property tax-supported bonds. So, from that perspective, the 1.5 million is what we'd be looking at overall with this project. That would be property tax-supported bonds.
But that's currently. That's not given the...
So, then, go ahead and add, literally, you would add the 2.8 to that. If we couldn't take it from anywhere else, there's no new ongoing revenues necessarily coming in. Now, I will say that we would not be paying IDOT until 2017 at the earliest. Now, I will say that we would not be paying I dot until 2017 at the earliest, so the council would have the ability to look at this for the 2017 budget process and 2016 what's left over. So, we do have two years on which to try and take a few bites out of this on the revenue side.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dave, can you just remind me what's driving this project, and I mean, what the priorities are here? Is it that we, if you were ranking things, would the replacement of the sewers along Green Bay Road, would that be number one? Is it the elimination of traffic conflict at the intersection? Is that the highest? How would you rank, rank things here? So, that would help me in trying to make a decision if we have to start eliminating what we, what we eliminate. And frankly, I'm really surprised that the traffic signals aren't timed. Does that take a new type of traffic signal to time a traffic signal?
Yes, the coordination isn't there with the current equipment. And probably, the most important feature of this project is pavement improvement. Green Bay Road is in very poor condition, north of Emerson Street, and then the reconfiguration of the Emerson Ridge-Green Bay intersection by the viaduct, and smoothing that out and that transition, that is, it's a challenging intersection, and part of it is because northbound Ridge is at a lower elevation than southbound Green Bay Road. And part of this project would be to lower Green Bay Road to the same elevation as Ridge, and creating better lines of sight for all the traffic moving in all the directions. And one of the biggest benefits of that would be to allow southbound traffic on Green Bay Road to turn east into Emerson Street and towards the downtown area, which they currently cannot do. Currently, they have to come, they have to remember to turn at Asbury and come down Emerson, and then turn left at Emerson, and people forget that, and then they--
At church.
Our church, I'm sorry.
Right, right. I'm just, I'm just wondering if there's a way to deal with those things without actually going to the expense of raising levels and, you know, doing, making those changes?
I don't--
Is that, is that accident-driven, or is that, trying to get back to how it was that we even started looking at this intersection, was it, was it the number of accidents, or?
Yeah, and I'm going to ask Sat to come up, who's been involved with this from the very beginning.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Alderman Fisk, there has been, and the city manager, Mr. Bakovic, there has been several concerns with this whole intersection configuration in terms of, you know, because the signals are so old, so one of the signals comes on green and the other one has to hold. So, in addition to the traffic, safety issues, the accident, and the turning movements, traffic conflicts, there are about 150 traffic conflicts, means two cars have to wait for each other, or there may be chance of the accident that can happen. So, there are several instances where the accident can happen, so it's a combination of things. Because of the viaduct and the way the Green Bay alignment comes over the Emerson and goes in, it was not this way before, and when they redid the UP Bridge, they realigned it, so they pretty much changed the whole intersection configuration. So, it's very confusing in terms of, you know, where to make the turns to go where. So, the, the whole traffic operations is not really functioning the way intersection is supposed to work. And these signals are about 30 years old, actually 40 years old. In 30 years ago, their heads were changed, and still we have the old foundations, and all the wiring and the cable underground has not been changed. So, these are the reasons why we were trying to do the intersection first we started, then looking at the intersection, then we decided that unless we go ahead and realign and fix the Green Bay whole length, this intersection by itself is not going to function. So, this project evolved into trying to fix the whole intersection and the corridor.
I understand that, and that does make a lot of sense, but, I mean, just given the, the pressure on us for spending money, or bonding for money, or I think is something that, that at least I have to think of really carefully. So, I'm sort of looking to see if, is there any other way that we can approach this? I mean, is putting signals in going to help? How are we, how can we look at this the way that, that Dave has mentioned, which is sort of prioritizing these things? Can we, can we do that, or does it have to be the whole project or no project?
To get a good project, you know, to really have the full accomplishment, we need to do the whole project. But the other option is, as Dave suggested, is to eliminate sections of the project, like eliminate the whole Asbury Avenue, eliminate the Ridge Avenue. So, those are the projects where you cannot do any improvements at this time, but you have to push it ahead. But overall, the way, in terms of the engineering analysis and the signal coordination, all these signals have to be modernized at the same time for them to work, because they will have the single controller controlling these intersections, and then, so if you're traveling at a certain speed, then you should be able to get through the whole intersection. So, you cannot take bits and pieces of the project, but if you want to eliminate, you should eliminate sections of the streets itself, so that we are not doing anything on those sections.
Okay.
Thank you, Alderman Tendem.
Thank you. My question is about, is about the two segments as well, Asbury and Ridge to Garnett. Were those driven by the necessity for new water mains, or were we doing that as, as just a matter of economy while we have the streets torn up for other reasons?
Yes, in a way. Asbury was added for water main, but the pavement condition is in, in poor shape as well. Ridge Avenue was added again for the water main work, and just coordination of getting the street lights as you approach that intersection to, to make it all appear the same. So, in a way, they were at it and are not 100% necessary for the project.
Not 100% necessary for the work and the safety of the community, so we should add that as well.
Yes, I agree wholeheartedly that the pavement condition on Asbury is not in good shape. The water main had been designed to be installed several years ago. Funding wasn't available due to the works, so it got postponed.
And we keep pushing back.
It has, it has been something that's been in the works for a while, and it's all very close to this job site, so that's why it was incorporated into this larger project.
Yeah, I didn't understand, I really remember that it was delayed, but we saw what happened on Central Street when that was delayed as well. It was just a little mini disaster in the middle of winter, so, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes. Did you--
Well, it added to that is that we keep pushing stuff back. We started on this, I believe, in 2006 or '07, and I remember it so well because of the lights, the traffic lights. So, we've been talking about the traffic lights and changing those since 2007, that I'm sure of. And things keep just be pushing back, and we're going to end up spending much more money than we're spending now. Had we done that then, we wouldn't be spending nearly this much, and I certainly understand that, but this is a main corridor to downtown, and that intersection is horrible, and anybody that drives it knows that. I would love to see it done all at the same time to save money, actually, you know, in terms of the water mains especially, and I believe you said they're all, all over 100 years old?
That is correct, yes.
So, you know, we know that they're going to have to be replaced, and I think Central Street was a good example of things happening in the middle of the winter, where we have, we end up spending much more. So, sometimes I think we are, what is it, pound--
Penny wise and pound foolish.
Penny wise and pound foolish, you know, in terms of where we are. And I'm not one who wants to spend all the taxpayers' money either, but I think that taxpayers will understand what's happening when we're looking at infrastructure, things like this, that we have to really consider. Hopefully, we will get some more money, but I think this is one of the times that we have to really look at, shall we go ahead and bond and do it? And I would hope that people will consider that.
Thank you, Alderman Miller.
Marty, excuse me, Marty, real quick. In terms of our total capital improvement project, roads, sewer, water, we budget based on the engineer's estimate for all these projects combined, do we ever have, or where are we at most years in terms of the total budget? Do we actually, I assume some go over, some go under estimates, but where do we look at, you know, in some, year to year, with these?
Alderman Miller, members of council, the, this year, we're feeling the effects of the economy coming back, so we're, we've had a few bids that we're under, but we've also, this is obviously over. We've enjoyed three or four years in a row of being underestimates for quite a bit, and that's all done. That finished last year, we had several bids that were very competitive. So, I would say we're going to be, for the projects we get done, we're going to be on budget, or a little, this will put us over on budget. And then, this year, with the change in the Public Works Agency structure, the engineering department is on, on a very fast schedule, where we will probably go out for debt. Last year, we went out for debt in September. We may be out for debt in May this year, because we will need funds sooner. We'll have payments to vendors four months earlier than we had in years past, and that's a great thing when it comes to accomplishing capital projects. But to answer your question, I think we will be on, on budget this year or over, given the projects that we're doing. We could always defer a whole project, but given the projects, we also have a, one major facilities project, Fleetwood, that is going to go over, and, but again, this is a 2017 payment item, we just have to account for it now. When we do a multi-year capital plan, we should look at this summer, next summer, and the summer after, with how we want to fit Emerson Ridge-Green Bay in, in the overall capital plan. And I think we can come back and do that in the near future, so the council has a good look at all the ramifications of saying yes with more bonds or trying to defer any other project. I think we can do that within the next 30 days, as far as give a, an update.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam. I think I just want to end on Marty's words, that's, that was the direction that I was looking for. I mean, it's a 2017 project, I appreciate having the update. I agree with Alderman Holmes, it is a very important project to that area of town, and so, we'll look forward to hear about the efforts to shake the bushes and get additional funds, and you're going to take a closer look at the project and see what things can be eliminated, and we'll wait to hear back from you, so we can move on.
Thank you, Alderman Wynn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I very much agree with Alderman Holmes that, that, and you can see by the estimate being so much lower than what the, what the actual cost is coming in, because that estimate is based on prior jobs that were done. And so, the longer we wait or push it off, we actually are spending much more money. And, and, you know, infrastructure deferred is, is cost increase, and we can see that, you know, in all over our city and every place else in America. So, you know, I, I think that we should stretch to get this done and get it done correctly, that because, you know, tearing up the streets again can't be more efficient for us later. So, to the extent that we can figure out any value engineering or get more money from CMAP, I, I think we need to look harder so that we can get the entire project done. I mean, there isn't just, this isn't just affecting the people who live there. I can't think of anybody in Evanston who doesn't go through that intersection a couple of times a week. And, you know, and this is the throughway for one of our two or three major throughways for everyone else from the North Shore coming south. So, I do think it's really, really important, and it's an economic development tool for us, because it is able, it makes it easier to get into our downtown. And the, the changes that we've seen on Chicago Avenue and Ridge by having coordinated lighting, coordinating streetlights is really dramatic. So, being able to have that entire project area coordinated will make another enormous difference. And frankly, the roadbed, as we all know, on Green Bay Road, it's, it's third world, really. Not to knock, but it is. And so, I, I, as I said, I agree with Alderman Holmes, if it's at all possible, I think we should do the entire job, because it will only be, the total will only be more expensive for us if we do portions of it and go back later to, you know, and we will have to go back later, because those water mains can't wait.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is the rest of Sheridan Road, is the Sheridan Road project also scheduled for 2017?
On, in 2017, yes, we, well, we're still hoping to do this project in 2016.
You're hoping to do Emerson-Green Bay in this year?
2016, but because the state, it's bid through the state, the state pays the contractor, and then it won't be until 2017 that the state will ask Evanston to reimburse them.
Okay.
So, that's, that's what we're talking about. Construction would be this, this year for Emerson Ridge-Green Bay.
Okay.
Sheridan Road from, actually, Chicago Avenue from Grove up to Sheridan Road, and Sheridan Road from Chicago Avenue to Lincoln Street is scheduled for '17, and then north of Lincoln Street up to Wilmette is scheduled for '18.
Okay, so, is it still realistic, do you think, to get Emerson-Green Bay done in 2016?
We believe so, and that's the one point that I wanted to say, was that we have to get back to I dot by April 18th at the very latest, which means April 11th is when we, staff would come back and give you the different options, give you the update of where we are, and a decision would have to be made probably at the April 11th meeting, so we can inform I dot whether we want to proceed forward with this project or not. If we don't let them know by April 18th, they will, the bids will run out and they'll cancel the project.
Okay, thanks.
Why don't we just not reimburse the state? They're always threatening not to reimburse us. Is that our secret plan? What does it cost when a water main breaks?
More gray hair for Dave.
I mean, there's lost economic development, depending on where it is.
That's correct, and, yeah, and those are soft costs that I have a hard time putting a dollar figure to. I could tell you how much it costs the water fund to go out and fix a main, but it's the inconvenience and the other businesses that are shut down and might have to send people home when, when we have a water main break.
And they're more than 100 years old. Well, I think we're kind of stuck, we need to fix it, but I drive down it at least once a day, so I have a self-interest. Thank you. Anyone else have any more questions? City manager, did you get what you need out of that discussion?
I think so, Madam Mayor. I think we will come back, we will do our best to raise money through other sources, we'll sharpen our pencil with available resources, but my sense is you will get a recommendation from us, which is largely the project that was bid, and we will come up with a financing plan that makes the most sense.
And I think Alderman Rainey's right, will compose a lovely letter to CMAP saying we totally applaud their work and have no problem with their increased membership charges.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right.
There's one appointment.
We have Alderman Rainey, would you walk us through, we have one appointment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appointments, the mayor is recommending for Parks and Recreation Board Denise Berito. Move approval?
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded to approve Denise Berito's appointment to Parks and Rec. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. And we don't have exact session.
You're not.
Bless us. Is there call of the ward? All right, Alderman Tendem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There will be a meeting, a sixth ward meeting, this Thursday, 7 o'clock, at Three Crowns Park in the multipurpose room, the various items of discussion, including pest or rat abatement, the Green Bay Road project, and capital improvements in the ward for this, this coming summer.
Thank you, Alderman Ravel.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Tomorrow evening at 7 o'clock, the neighbors in the area west of Dodge are going to be meeting, along with anybody else, everybody's invited, to see the new Autobahn facility and to hear about all of the roadway improvements on Howard Street and up and down the wall that separates the shopping center from the neighborhood. That's at 7 o'clock. Today was showing of the Howard Street properties that we have for rent, and looking forward to getting a full report on that.
Thank you, Alderman Miller.
By the way, I do support this project, the Green Bay Road Ridge project, and I agree with Alderman Wynn and Alderman Holmes, that we have to do everything we can, not that we can't maybe polish up some of the, the tasks, but we need to do everything we can to get this-- can to get this done over with before Sheridan Road starts.
Thank you. Alderman Miller?
Real quick, I just have my next upcoming ward meeting on Thursday, April 7th, at 7:00 PM. It'll be at the Cayman East Field House. This is a park, 1115 South Boulevard, and this is the original park district's house. One of the main topics will be road and abatement, as I'm sure it's going to be a banner year in the city, given the warm weather. So we'll be talking about different strategies, how to deal with it in the ward then. Thanks.
Thank you, and good luck. Alderman Fisk. Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two quick things. First, I wanted to make this comment while we were discussing the merging of committees. Within the last month or so, I've heard from a number of cab companies who are very concerned about what we're doing with their medallions, and unfortunately, I just, I don't have enough tenureship on council to even know where to begin. So I'll look to the city manager if there's just some information that I could read to educate myself, that would be great. And I've been waiting for an email from one of the companies. If there's anything we can do to maybe do some outreach to our current medallion owners to get ahead of the conversation, that would be very helpful.
Thank you. I've had some letters, too. Yeah.
I'm sure. We all have, and that may make sense sooner rather than later. And then the other comment was just a thank you to the members of council, city manager Alderman Nguyen, Madam Mayor Alderman Holmes, Alderman Tendem, Miller, and our city manager, Wally Bob Kowicz, Alderman Rainey also, it was her first time there as well, and two of our, two members of our staff who attended our chessman gala. And there were just a lot of guests, enjoyed themselves, and made common the fact that we were supported by so many members of the city staff and also our city council. So I just wanted to extend a very warm thank you for your presence, as well as your generosity for those of you who bid and donated. So thank you very much on behalf of our club.
Alderman Nguyen? Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. Alderman Holmes? I just want to follow up on the event for Saturday night to say that four of the ladies that are important in my life, Mrs. Bridges, Mrs. Harmon, Mrs. Liddell, and Mrs. Murphy, who had 336 years between them, and over 200 of those years have been devoted to and working with the NAACP. And to see them on it was just really marvelous. So it was a wonderful event. So to the chessmen, we thank you for really honoring those ladies. It was magnificent.
You may want to give a shout out to your other resident as well, just in case--
Oh, I'm sorry. Absolutely. Since he's a fifth ward resident, also to Michael Sutton from Infrastructure Engineering, who was also honored. But it was the ladies, it was impressive.
Just have your back.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
All in favor, say aye.